The Mayor and Alderman meeting of April 28th, 2025 is called to order. Dan Sargent, please lead us in our prayer.
I pray, Father, again with grateful hearts, we just assemble here once again to conduct the business of this little town. We're just grateful for the opportunity. We thank you for the place we live. We thank you for the presence of those that assist us in every hour of the day. We want to commit our police and EMS and fire people to you and all those that attend to the needs that we have in the community. Commit our evening to you in conducting of the business and ask your blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call, please.
Dave?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Dave?
Present.
Present.
Here. Okay, Alderman, you've received in your packet the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
I can motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, all hearing done? All those in favor of passing the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Citizens' comments. At this time, any citizen wish to be heard?
You may.
Paul?
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Board. My name is Paul Fantuzzi, and I appreciate the time to talk to you tonight. I respect your time, so I'll try to be brief. A issue has been, I wanted to point out, and it has arisen. I'm trying to develop a piece of property on Parker Street and build several houses, and there's been an issue that has arisen. I've been developing this piece of property for about 10 months now and doing my due diligence for that total time, very in the beginning and in that 10-month period. I've been doing a complete overview of everything. During the months leading up to this preliminary, the preliminary planning hearing, I had numerous confirming conversations regarding the water line availability and the adequacy of the system by the Water Department. After the planning meeting was okay on December 4th and the plot plan was approved, I continued to perform my due diligence. I spoke to the utilities and had them sign everything off. Once again, I was assured that the development was approved for tapping into the current water lines that were already in place. Up until that point, 10 months into the project, I had never had the opportunity to meet the utility supervisor. One week before the final meeting, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed something, I'm sorry. One week before the final meeting of April 25th was brought to my attention that the utility supervisor was the one that had to sign off on the water. That was the very final sign-off that I had to get accomplished. And I had never met the utility supervisor up until that very last week, which was March 21st. During that meeting, on March 21st, we met in the site, and he had stated that his concern was that the line was PVC instead of steel, and that if it was PVC, that we would be all set. The utility supervisor was also informing that on March 23rd, he would come and dig up the line and determine if it was PVC, after determining or determined that it was PVC. If echo arrived on the 23rd, I watched it, sat there for several hours, nothing was dug up. On the 24th, I was informed that the utility supervisor had turned in the entire project to the city engineer and had turned it into the city engineer. At no time during the conversations with the planner was a need for engineering ever brought up to me. The utility supervisor once again was not involved in this project for the first, the whole entire 10 months of due diligence that I did and the many city meetings that I had with the Water Department and the Planning Department. The hired engineer for the city firm recommended a complete water main infrastructure replacement. This late-stage process, again, one week before the final plan was to be approved, has put this project on stop. Questions I have for the city planner are, why did the city planner not flag the potential water pressure volume issues at the very beginning? Secondly, why did the city planner not flag or identify when the requirements of a city engineer analysis would be necessary? Again, should be in the very first part of the stage of this process. Why did the city planner not identify where there's any issues with using the existing water supplies? After several initial discussions, the plot plan was reviewed by the planner several times and changed several times up until November of 2024, and at no time was anything noted or the city planner could have any questions regarding the water pressure, the water volume, or the water lines. Questions I have for the utility supervisor. Why was the utility supervisor, the person who signs off on the final plots, not at any other meetings from June 24th to the preliminary meeting and the approval meeting of December 4th, and any other meetings after that up until the final week before the end of March? Why was the 21st of March the first time the utility supervisor was involved in this project, months after the start of the conversations and the numerous conversations I had with city officials? Why was I singled out on this project to be sent to the city engineer in the final week before the final approval with other projects in the city passed without consistent engineering approval procedures? My final points. As we're limited on time tonight, I want to respect your time and provide you with this brief overview. The city must fulfill its obligation to provide water service where current water systems are already existing and ensure standardized, non-discontaminatory enforcement of all regulatory requirements. The lack of clear policies, proper procedural checklists, and enforcement of established protocols is not the developer's problem. The misconduct and procedural mismanagement displayed by various departments reflects a breakdown in fairness to all. I respectfully request the Board that they acknowledge that this development is entitled to the water service from the existing water lines and the infrastructure per the city ordinance and per the Tennessee Public Utility Commission. I would also ask the Board to acknowledge that if an upgrade to the existing infrastructure is deemed necessary, the city is responsible for completing the upgrade in a timely and prompt manner. I would ask the Board to investigate contradictions, delays, and apparent mismanagements of the Planning and City Utility Department. I would also ask the Board to recognize that there's no definitive documented basis has been presented to deny the service, which has verbally been approved multiple times to use the existing water lines. And finally, to resolve this matter in a prompt and effective way, not to further delay this project. Being respectful of your time tonight, I will end on this note. In closing, I will be providing you with a packet for your review at your convenience. And I wanted all the members of the Board to be aware of this, is why I'm here tonight. I sincerely appreciate your time for that and appreciate the opportunity to have a follow-up after you review these packets. I am committed to building top-quality homes here in Mont Eagle. In the packet, I provided you with a picture of some of the homes that I've built for the past. I'm also committed to following rules, but it is difficult to do so when the rules are unclear. They seem to change depending on who you talk to and what day you talk to them. Thank you for listening. Thank you for consideration. Thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Let me give the Alderman a brief update. Sadly, Paul is correct. I've had recent conversation with him, and we have scheduled a meeting with the engineer and some of our folks for this Friday to discuss those issues and probably more. So I was contacted by Mr. Fantuzzi. I'm now fully involved, and I hope to bring forth a resolution. We'll certainly keep you all advised as we review the packet. Those are questions that need answering, as I've told Mr. Fantuzzi, not just for him, but for all the developers that follow. So we need to address this, and I thank you for your time, Paul, to discuss this, and we will continue to deal with it. Any other citizens have comments? Yes?
I just have a question. I wondered about the rest areas, the two rest stops, why you're closing.
Oh, that's all T-Dot. I don't know. They're probably doing water work. John, do you know?
They got a water leak.
They have a water leak and...
Behind it.
They have or have not? They have not, as yet found it?
They've got a valve down there by the east bend. They think it's back up this way. They don't know for sure. And I talked to one of the T-Dot guys the other day, and he said that they're in discussion about not opening back up.
Does the city have a position on that, Mayor?
Not that I know of. I was always told it was a T-Dot facility. I was always told it was a T-Dot facility, and we provided water.
Yeah, but I'm not about as far as it being something that's needed for our community, that we might try to lobby T-Dot that it remain open, or is it makes no difference, no benefit to the community, or...
Well, obviously, it's for the motoring public, but I'll be happy to call T-Dot and see what their plans are. I had not heard that they planned to shut it down.
That's what, I couldn't think of guy's name, that's what he told me. They're producing these drains up here, my tool, and I started talking to him.
Well, you know, when we're in drought conditions, I mean, we always shut them off pretty quick to save water and...
He told me that they're in discussion to shut them down where the traveling people can stop by and give the business money, buy their snacks.
Here at City Hall?
Yeah.
Well, I hasten to point out, there are no rest areas from Mont Eagle to Nashville. So I will deal with T-Dot on that and try to find an answer, Jessica.
Can I say something about this gentleman here? About what he said?
If you think you have to. I mean, we're not debating it. I just want to put the pieces together.
I'd like people to know in the beginning, I didn't have a thing to do with this. I wasn't brought in till the last. I didn't know nothing about nothing going on. He was told by a certain employee he could hook on. I never told him that, and that's the reason I hadn't signed that paper.
Well, that's what I want to discuss Friday. Any other citizens wish to be heard at this time? Okay. My communications and comments are relatively brief. I appreciate my wife and the volunteers that worked with her on the Easter egg hunt. I think it was pretty well-attended. The weather was a little iffy, but Martha Anne was there, Carol Benner was there, and a few others that I honestly don't remember, but it's good. Katie Trahan, I think, was there. It's good when we get some volunteers to do some work. I've been preaching this forever. Martha Anne would appreciate some volunteers. Nate Wilson might appreciate some volunteers on some of these committees. If we want things done, then we're going to have to do it or pay for it, and that might be an undue burden. So to the volunteers that did the Easter egg hunt and all the volunteers that follow, thank you. The May meeting will be May 19th, as the last Monday of the month is Memorial Day, and we will not be meeting on Memorial Day. We will have an observance, which I will address at the May 19th meeting. The Planning Commission will be May 6th, which is next Tuesday. The ball field, we had some activity, some activity got rained out. I met with Ty Burnett this morning. He doesn't think that there's any more activity scheduled. He's been coordinating and been in constant touch with Cindy Church at Tracy City, who's their organizer. They've been a good partner, and we're trying to provide facilities for the youth that want to play ball. The numbers seem to be decreasing. That's why the Tracy City Mont Eagle ball team has kind of unofficially become one. And if the parents don't want to, don't cooperate, or the children don't want to play ball, then we'll have to decide the future of that probably on a year-to-year basis. But right now, they played a game, everything went well. People turned out, the concession stand saw some activity, but on the larger scale, tournaments that were scheduled in May will not be held. So they're either going back to Tracy City, but they may not need us, so we'll have to address that at one point or another.
I think, Mayor, there's still practice in there, though.
They practice there, but according to Ty, they may not need all that is needed during a game or tournament. Final thing is Sparkle Week. There will be Sparkle Week, May 12th to the 16th. Yes, I was the one that questioned whether or not to have it. I met with some longtime residents, some friends that have become advisors, and they think that we should have Sparkle Week. And I said, well, in the past, there's been a lot of problems. And they said, well, then deal with the problems and don't be nice. So when we go through your street, that street will be one pickup only. If something comes out the next day, it's going to stay there, and we'll take what action we feel appropriate in contacting the owner or whatever. But it's a cost in time and dollars and coordination and equipment to provide Sparkle Week. I think Swanee has a one-day cleanup process. We take all week hitting both sides, Grundy and Marion Counties. We do not do the gated communities, but we'll see how Sparkle Week goes this year, and hopefully people will cooperate, because we can't keep going back to the same block to pick up because someone didn't put it out, put out there whatever they wanted picked up. So Sunday evening, everything should be out, and then our crews will come through and pick it up. So that's my comments for the evening. Calendar events, I did, due to scheduling, we'll ask the Fire Department to go first.
On the Sparkle Week, I can touch on this, so that, try to coordinate with the scheduling on that. I think the last few years was rough after, you know, the crews had picked it and all the stuff. Some of the residents left things sitting out front, and I was the bad guy that had to remind them of the property maintenance ordinance for junk and trash. So, you know, I'll ask that you respect their scheduling and try to stay in line with them. On the Fire Department, there was 32 calls for the month of April that we've ran. Six members have been chosen for that first responder class that I was telling you all about. We're active right now and in class. In around June, they'll take their National Registry and get their state license. So far, class is going great. I think we've had about eight classes so far, and Tim Prager's teaching, so very exciting. We're pretty stoked about it. We're finally getting items in for our CBDG grant. This was the grant that was issued back in '23, somewhere in there. We're two years out, but we finally have got two shipments. We've got our washer and dryer and some thermal cameras that's come in. All that stuff will be stockpiled, and once the whole package is received, the state will come in and inventory it, then we can issue it to the Department of the City on our inventory. So that's a great thing. That's rough, though. I had on the fireside, but I wanted to just let you all know that our hearts and prayers are with Tracy City, you know, during their loss, and with Hardest's family, with the annex cafe, all Fire members. Everybody that responded done a great job to keep it out of the adjacent buildings. So just thank a lot about those folks. That's a big hit for them on a pretty tremendous item for their town. First fireside, have you got any questions with this?
Well, I just want to echo your comments about the annex that has been a long-established entity in Tracy City, and I was concerned about the neighboring buildings because they're old.
They are.
And probably glorified tinderboxes.
Yes.
So I appreciate your efforts, and you're mentioning it. I'm sure the town understands and prays for their family at their loss. Because it was significant, I understand. It was a total...
Yes, it's pretty well-guttered that they had a grease fire. For those of you, I'm sure it's out now. They had a grease fire that extended up to the second floor, and we was able to keep it contained to the annex building. It didn't spread to the antique store or the lodge next door. So that was the whole strip that I was talking at the beginning of the meeting, that what you said a year ago, or I mean, 1934, 35 is when they, from one day is when they had the catastrophic loss, that we was one day difference. So, and that wiped out their whole downtown. So this was a tremendous save for Tracy City. I'm very grateful for it.
Well, thank you for your efforts and tell our firefighters. Any questions on the fire report from the Alderman?
Half one.
Go ahead, Dan.
Chief, you say 32 calls for the month of April. Internally, you have a breakdown of, say, inside city limits, outside city limits, mutual aid, or structural fires, or kind of a... I think it would be good for the council to get actually a copy of whatever your report is, and you don't even have to go through and count all this stuff. You just make a copy of that and insert it, and then we kind of see if there's a trend for extraction on accidents or whatever the case may be.
Well, this is kind of just hand-counted, so these cards are coming into this fashion. Now, the old system, we used to be able to itemize it and break it down. Now we do that on an annual.
Okay.
So just based on the calls that we receive for the month, it's going into one, because now they're counted as a fire district versus a municipality. That's on the state guideline side. But I can break them.
No, I don't personally. I just would like to know basically what, you know, what your greatest response is.
Got you.
I'm assuming it's, I mean, I hear sirens all the time, and I'm at home, I don't know, you know, if it's a structure fire or, you know, if it's an automobile accident.
That's right. I think at the end of the month, that gives the whole chart of all the calls that's been combined for that month, along with the payroll for the volunteers, and that's kind of the goal, is how we do it. But we can spreadsheet it.
Yeah, if we could just get, if we could just get a copy of that, and there's no more work for you to have to do.
Sure.
If it's turned into her, and then we just receive a copy of that.
Yep.
And then we can refine that as time goes on, especially when you get in for this medical, what's the...
EMS response, yes.
Yes, yeah. I think with that coming up, that you're going to see more increase in costs.
Absolutely.
And I think the town needs to monitor that. I think it's going to be a great benefit for the citizens, and I think we need to be able to show what you do on there.
Sure, we'll do that. Yeah, we'll figure out something to get you some power.
Any other questions from the Alderman on the Fire Department? Okay, proceed with the building, please.
So the building codes, AJ's actually in class tonight with EMS stuff, so the codes, Super A, the folks are here, the patels are here with us, but they've remediated the issues with the abandoned vehicles, and they're currently in compliance against municipal ordinance for their property. So they've worked with me over the last few months and taken action to remediate it, and all's well right now. So we appreciate that. Thank you. It's great working with you. There's one residential property that remains in remediation process for the property maintenance issues. Look for that to be resolved. It's a landlord or landlord tenant issue that we're kind of in the middle of because there's some paperwork on it. There's an RV that was located at a church in town that's recently been moved. The ordinance has also been addressed to the property owner of the RV, not the church, but I dealt with the direct property owner of the RV and let him know. There's a possibility that there's going to be an appeal that's going to be filed to you guys for an exception to be requested at a later date. I don't know if he, I told him to call City Hall and schedule that through Mayor, so that's the way I left that.
Let me interrupt here.
Sure.
He did contact me. I have a meeting scheduled for a week from Friday. I think it's May 8th. I'll be meeting with the individual's attorney.
Thank you. And on that, I'm just going to ask the Alderman to, you know, I mean, I think these ordinances, a lot of these ordinances that we're flopping back and forth in, you know, 10, 15, some 16 years back, and although they're nice ordinances, and that's where we were, we were at, things have changed, times have changed, and I think these ordinances need to be reviewed. I think the whole book, start to finish, needs to be put through, been reviewed, and I mean, it needs to be in black and white. It's hard to uphold these because some of the things, I mean, I kind of feel like I'm a liaison between you guys as the city and these folks as the property owners. And, you know, if there's a loophole through there, I don't blame the public for going after the loophole, and I mean, I'm just going to uphold what's in the books in black and white. So I think that needs to be reviewed.
And I think there's a process for some of that that Nate will address a little later.
Okay. So that's where I'm at on code side. Any other questions?
Any questions from the Alderman on building or codes?
I got one.
Sure.
If you, if there's a code violation and you cite them to Municipal Court, do you have a, what I call a ticket book, like the police do?
I do not, no, I don't.
So how do you, how do you get that potential for accused violator to show up in Municipal Court?
So I write that on a letterhead from the building, from the codes department. I write it on a letterhead, sign it, bold print it with their court date on it, serve it, sign it as served, and then give a copy to the court clerk. And usually, Chief knows about that, too. I mean, he's made aware of anybody that's going to court, and this is some of the things in the code that I'm saying needs to be revised, because prior to, it states that the police department serves them to court. Well, now, if you've got an ordinance officer that's on your staff, I mean, I'm not trying to flex my muscles, but I need some kind of formal book, because it's my name to take this, take them to court. I'm going to be the officer, per se, in court, so...
Well, that's my next question. Would it not be beneficial for you to have a citation book that you would write out to the potential violator with whatever the potential violation is, then it comes to the docket for the Municipal Court and they're, it's tracked, which is tracked anyway, I assume, with your letterhead?
It is. And myself, I kind of like the letterhead, because I, that gives me, I'm one of the old-style guys, if it's not in writing, it didn't happen, and that gives me a way to write the whole thing down and give it to the property owners and the public, and then give the same copy to the judge and put a copy on my lap to testify on.
Yeah, I just, a lot of communities, I've had people tell me they got a citation from codes.
That's right.
In smaller towns, and I just wondered what the, what the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Alderman? Yeah, quickly, the, not necessarily to you, but to your point, Travis, about the codes. We approved, or the council approved last year the new set of codes. We kind of put a stopping point and said, okay, we send everything off to MTA. When does that new booklet, if you will, do to us?
That was just the zone ordinance. I think separately, you've asked for the municipal codes to be updated. Last time they did that, it took a long, long time.
The documents are sent to MTA on a regular basis. They just have to reduce it to a book. Right, I know, but in doing what, in order to follow up with Travis's request, I'm kind of looking at all the codes, and I've done this when I first got elected last November or whatever. There's, you have to go in and, there's so many ordinances that are still in the book that are overwritten by ordinances, and you have to scramble back and forth to figure it out. So if we could just ask MTA when we think we might get a clean update, then I think that would help in our initial review.
Last time I checked, she said we were about seven on the list.
Yeah, I think, I think I was told it took 18 months last time.
It takes a long time.
Because you're getting something for free.
Okay, well, I'll call MTA. Any other questions for Travis? Okay, thank you.
You want buildings? Buildings, there have been seven.
Oh, buildings, I'm sorry.
Seven inspections done, I've issued, seven inspections done, I've issued two certs of occupancy and four permits have been issued to the town as of now. I'd also want to catch up on a few of the building sites. So Campbell Subdivision, a few of these called me regarding Oak Drive. I've kind of followed that fellow around and that contractor and asked him to put cones and barrels and whatnot out in front of his vehicles as he's parking the roadway. Don't block the whole roadway. Be courteous to the neighbors and make sure the mud and the dirt and the breeze off the roadway. So I've stayed pretty active with that fellow, making sure that we're in compliance. So far, I mean, he's a dream to work with. He's a super nice guy. I'm not having any other issues. I think Chief's also had his guys patrol there as well, and we've really not caught him into any, any negligence on his side, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Police Department?
Good afternoon, citizens. Council? All right. I'll make this fairly quick. I'm going to start from the bottom up. We had 56 traffic stops for the month. We had 11 vehicle crashes, which is two down, none of which were any major crashes. They were fender benders. Out of the, we had written 15 citations and we had four warnings. Call volume was up, and this time of the year, it does go up as it gets warmer. People get a little bit more antsy, I guess, wouldn't say. So the call volume was 343 up from last month, which was 248. So we have that there. We had two driving or revoked suspended. We had two DUIs, two violation of probation, two simple assaults, one domestic assault, one disorderly, one vandalism, three drug-related cases. We had one identity theft, and we had zero escorts for the month. So also, too, just to address, some of you may have noticed several weeks ago, we were out in front of Country Mark for several hours, because a team, we were, made their corner too sharp and decided he wanted to be one with the power lines. So we worked as quick as we could. Fire Department did an exceptional job. All the other responding agencies, phone service and electric company got out as quick as they could. We had had any incidences there typically. When you close down a major road like that or funnel traffic down, you tend to have some ancillary incidences, and we had none, which is testament to the Fire Department's ability to communicate with us. So I was happy to say that. Just a few things I'm going to start doing, police news or public announcements. I'm just going to go over two scams that are going on right now. There's a scam currently being sent out to residences and these are going to be our elders that, that is going out. It's an act, it's a check that looks like an IRS check. And I mean, it literally looks like a real check. Until you flip it over on the back, and on the back of it, it asks for your name, date of birth, social security number, and at the very bottom it says, can you fax or email this to, you know, the, the address? So that is obviously a scam. The IRS is not going to, if they're going to send you a check, you take it to the bank and you go, you know, your bank's protocol, your driver's license, whatever they need. If you get a check like that, any check like that, I mean, asking for all your information, unless it says from a loan company that says this is a check, you go deposit it, which I would do anyway, because those are high interest, but that is going on right now. Luckily, Montegoel hasn't had any issues. However, we did have a visitor to Montegoel that had this happen to her from Franklin, Tennessee, so she just wanted to bring it up to me. The other one, and most of us have already received this text, that you owe a toll bill.
Hmm.
Right? So obviously that is a scam, however, we have had some individuals or citizens in Montegoel that fell for it, you know, so you just got to ask yourself, when's the last time you went to a toll booth? So, you know, if you're not for sure, just ask someone or come by the Police Department and we'll be able to address it for you. You can call, you may catch us there, you may not. We don't actually have a person to answer phones in there. I am going to work on getting us an answering service, you know, so I can take messages, but best bet is to come by. There's a number on the front of the door.
Go ahead, man. Tell you that I called the toll company and they said they would never send texts to collect tolls.
Correct.
They will never, they will never send a text message in order to do that.
There's a number on the front of the door. If you need immediate assistance from the Police Department, call that number that goes, it goes to the dispatch center. The dispatch center gets on the radio and has one of us dispatch to the Police Department. Now, the other one is, everyone's been asking me about the status of the Mountain Inn. Mountain Inn, so I spoke at the District Attorney's Office. They've settled, a settlement has been reached regarding the charges. Charges have been dropped on one of the accused. Charges are pending on the second accused as long as the second accused stays out of trouble for six months, then charges could be dismissed or another compromise may take place. I spoke to one of the two owners and their plan is to rebuild the condemned location known as the Mountain Inn. Montegoel Police Department is dedicated to ensure that the Mountain Inn and Super 8 are safe areas for our visitors and for the residents, and I'm confident with the help of the owners that we can make this happen.
Okay. Any questions from the aldermen?
Yes, sir. What, what were the charges?
It was filing a false police report.
So there was just one, one charge?
Okay. Okay. Chief, what, what is that number that, that you said is posted on the door that goes, that, that goes to dispatch but not through 911?
I don't know it off my head, but I'll be carded on to get it before we leave.
It's in my contacts if I can find it.
I was about to say, I'd like to put it in mine.
It's what?
Two zero seven seven dispatch.
Two zero seven seven. There is one other thing I wanted to address.
What is that, nine, nine?
Nine three one.
Nine three one, nine, nine, nine two four?
That was Police Department number, four, nine one one.
Go ahead, Chief.
There is one other thing I wanted to address. With the help of Melissa, who works with Debbie, she was able to get me a dress to the owner of the property behind the Circle K. So no phone number, however, I have sent out a certified letter to get a response. It is private property, so I can ask people. I have made contact with three people who were banished from the Mountain Inn four days ago, who were living in there over the weekend. So we made contact with them, asked them that they needed to leave, okay? It's a tough chief situation considering it is private property. So I'm doing the best I can within law. It'd be like if I came over to Greg's apartment and said, Greg, you can't have so-and-so here. You know, now if Greg calls me and says, hey, I don't want so-and-so here, then I can say, hey, so-and-so, you can't come back. It'd be criminal trespass. So what I'm hoping happens is I do receive some kind of correspondence from the owner and then get them to give me permission and then also if we can get or have them or work out something to where we can put no trespassing signs there. Now, there is an easement through there that is for the state to work on the lines. Now, if those individuals were in the easement, I can do something about that, but they're always smarter than that. They want to hide in the woods, so. I'm, we're trying to be compassionate, however, you know, I'm trying to work within the scope of the law. We are also trying to find in places to go as well. We spent half a day trying to find shelters and every shelter from here to Nashville is completely full. So it's not like we're just not being sensitive to the situation, however we are in progress.
Are you happy, how many people are over there?
I do, actually. It's the same three people that keep getting banished from the Mountain Inn. It's, it's a, a black male and two females. So we know exactly who they are, so there's no one else in the woodwork. I mean, heck, they weren't even there a week ago because myself and the guys, we walked through the whole property, but literally over the weekend, they built a John Morris compound, which they took down today. So we're right there. Now, the other issue is that we have is, it is a mess back there, so unless the property owners got to want to clean it up, you know, do we just leave it there for other people to come in and, you know, camp out or, you know, what have we decided? Something we can try to figure out as a community, you know?
Well, we'll go over that.
Because it is a mess back there.
We'll go over that with Travis and the ordinances because I think there's general property cleanup requirements and we should address that.
It is private property, so.
Well, then the owner needs to do some, the owner needs to do something, if that's the case, but yes, we'll meet on that.
What's that, sir?
Owner's absentee owner, still the Bush family?
It is the Bush family, yes.
And they live in Florida?
Yes, yes. So I sent a, I sent a letter, I think it was last Thursday, I think it was.
They're elderly.
So hopefully we can get some kind of correspondence back and they can, all I've got to do is, they just got to give me permission to make sure no one comes on the property as soon as they do that, because, you know, integrity's a big deal. You know, I want to be able to say that I did it the right way. So, but I'm pretty sure that they will reach back out to you, just don't believe it.
Thank you.
All right. I save this comment for after the police chief's report. I've been asked to sign on with a letter to our federal state representative, Dr. Dejarle, who's our representative in Congress. The second paragraph that of course struck me and I'm sure will strike all of you and goes to our limitations of facilities is the following. This collaborative effort meets a crucial need in our communities during summer months when school is not in session, children do not receive school lunch or breakfast and thus their nutrition suffers. As you no doubt know, rates of childhood poverty are extremely high in Grundy County. Twenty-nine percent. Marion County, twenty-three percent. Franklin County, sixteen percent. Poverty and child food insecurity intertwine with twenty-two percent of children in Grundy County and eighteen percent in both Franklin and Marion Counties facing hunger. Poor nutrition undermines children's health and educational attainment. This goes on, it's a letter that was presented to me to sign on by Tom Sanders, the Executive Director of the Community Fund. It's a letter to Scott Dejarle, our representative, and it just goes to the limitations that this county and our neighbors have to deal with. So as the police chief said, what are we going to do with these people? We don't have the facilities, everything is filled from here to Nashville, so it's getting to be a statewide problem, perhaps a nationwide problem. They're sending it to Congressman Dejarle because it's tied to, of course, the budget reviews, without getting into politics, the budget reviews that the federal government is doing as they work towards their reconciliation bill and their congressional budget. So I just wanted to underline and emphasize the importance of what's going on around here, and it's something that Morton Memorial does with the food bank, Grundy County does with the food bank, but there's a lot more need than that, it seems. So thank you for your efforts, chief, in trying to coordinate whatever we can do. Okay.
Up there?
Yes?
Do we have any idea how many homeless people are in the area?
No. Well, unless you do, I do not.
There, there are four.
That's four?
There's, there's four. There's the three individuals I spoke with and an Arabic individual, male subject, so.
So four people, not four families?
Four people.
Right.
Correct.
They're on the streets.
Correct. They're on, yeah, they're on the streets.
I mean, they're the, they're home with their...
There's different guests that are actually living on the streets. There's four in Montegoel.
Chief, when, we had this issue a couple of years ago with a fellow at the Piggly Wiggly, and at that time, the Nashville Rescue Mission told me they would take any male who didn't have a criminal record, who had an ID. I don't know whether these, these guys qualify under those circumstances. I, I think it was different for females, but I don't know if you researched them.
They did not, unfortunately.
Okay, all right. They were, they were the only ones, when I did the research, that would take any, they, they would find a place for them.
Correct. I reached out to them as well, up to East Hill, and unfortunately, these individuals do not follow that protocol.
Okay, thank you, chief. Parks and Rec, I told you about the ball field and what we're doing there. Utility Manager is next.
I don't have anything, but you can do it.
Any council member have a question for John?
Yeah, I do. I'll hang it last, though, I think we'll turn it out to him.
Here, I'll go, I'll go first. John, I was curious about the spreadsheet that you passed out, the, for phosphorus in particular, but, but in several of these, when you look at the per limit daily max, it's got the nine, 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 nine point zero. Is that a, is that, is that kind of a filler number for things? I, I can't imagine that we would have...
Which one are you looking at, Greg?
On the back page.
Back page, well, it's for a lot of them, but the back page, the, I was, I was looking specifically at the phosphorus, but even the nitrogen has, has that nine, 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 nine daily max. Down at the bottom in the gray. It, it might be in Excel.
That's the permanent limit max.
Nine hundred and nine, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
You see it right there on the list, it's permanent limit daily max.
Yes, I see that. That, that, sorry, it doesn't make sense to me. Daily max for, for phosphorus, this nine thousand, nine hundred and something that...
I may have to ask the wrong one in this part here.
It, it looks like an Excel issue, to be honest with you.
But now, as far as the phosphorus, the phosphorus is still good. It's a, the limit's fifteen hundred is nine oh seven. The phosphorus has been good about six months, I think it's been.
So it shows here the phosphorus at zero point seven on, on average?
Right. And then, see, this is another charge on it. I didn't give you all of them, I'm sure, on the phosphorus.
Okay. But, so what's our limit then?
Hundred five, fifteen.
Okay, that's where that nine, 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 nine number messed me up because I knew, I knew that wasn't correct. So it's, so we have fifteen milligrams per liter?
Yeah, and then the nine oh seven, that's, now this for mortgage.
Okay.
This is the last one they gave me. February is eight eighty-two, January it was eight thirty.
So does that mean we've solved the phosphorus issue? Did we, did we figure out where it was coming from or are you, are you saying it was just an intermittent thing?
It's in the sludge.
Got stirred up?
No, got to get rid of it. We got the press coming in today, press again.
Yeah, because that, that eight eighty-two and the, what'd you say, the three hundred?
Uh, that was in the...
Those are far exceeding our limits, right?
Well, the limit's fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred milligrams.
Well, Travis was telling us that he had exceeded those limits at two different lift stations now, so does that...
Well, I don't know, I think they don't want to test them. I mean, even if it's in the lift station, how you going to stop it? It's going to come to the plant and we've got to treat it to knock it out. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if you're, if you're telling us we're chasing our tails, that's, that's good to know.
We're not chasing tails. When he gets, when he gets the sludge out, where we have to place the waste, then it's going to be good again. But we've got to set up to do it twice a year now.
So this is sludge within the lift stations as well as at the plant, or just at the plant?
At the plant.
All right, so our, our limits and why we got ourselves in a trouble is because it's a twelve-month rolling thing, so, so where are we, where are we sitting in terms of the twelve-month? Are we out of the danger zone?
I didn't get that, they, they keep that one.
If we can kind of find that out, I'd be curious to know where we stand, if we've got two more months to get to a rolling number that we like or if we're still in the six month range or whatever, so. If you happen to, happen to be able to find that out, that'd be great for next, next month or four.
Where we get in trouble, when it gets full of sludge, the digger, we got telescopic valve we drain, clear water, but it fills up so much, and when you drain it off, then you get the phosphorus, you put your phosphorus right back to the head of the plant. So when we get the sludge out there, we got time to, for it to fill up again. We have trouble with it about every year when the digger's missed full, we have trouble to get the phosphorus to fill.
Would it make sense if we, if we figured out a way or if we could afford to, to get rid of the sludge more than just the once a year?
We're going to, twice, we have a plan for twice.
And should, should we be doing it more to avoid some of these problems?
Now, I told you, I don't know if you can afford it.
Twice a year, just, I've been dealing with this. Twice a year seems to be a number that everyone feels comfortable with. We'll see how that goes if it's needed. More is needed, then we'll treat it appropriately. But it was for a long time, once a year, which obviously wasn't sufficient, so we've increased it to twice a year, April, basically April and October.
Do we have any numbers of how much it costs to do that every time?
Not offhand. It's thousands. Do you remember the...
I mean, because, because we're, we're about to increase capacity and we're about to increase flow.
I think the one treatment was approximately twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand to remove the sludge?
Yes.
Per incident?
Yeah, they're here for a good part of the week, if not the whole week.
I'd, I'd ask you to, for this, copy this report because this is what the plant sends to TDA, is that correct?
That's right.
And, and I'm assuming it would make more sense if, if every month you submitted this to City Hall and to go out in our packet so we can see the flows and it has the rainfall and, and all of that, but, but what it, it doesn't show, and I don't guess it can from the plant, it, it doesn't show, or other customers like Tracy City or Grundy Housing or whoever, it, it doesn't show those that they're in there as a total, but there's not a breakdown. When you look at the total of what we, we took in at the plant, we don't know how many gallons of that was from Tracy City or Montegoel Sunday School Assembly or Grundy Housing. Is that the three?
Yeah.
Three, okay. And until we, if, if we want to monitor those numbers, we've got to have the flow leaders.
Exactly.
Okay. But, but I would ask that, that John submit this to City Hall monthly for, to be put out in the council's information packet.
That's great.
And, and then we need to look at the water plant to see, I know that's not your, your thing, I guess, but, but I'm assuming there's a similar report that they take out raw water, treated water, all of that, and I think that needs to be made a part of the record for the council to have that information.
Well, when, when the press gets done at the plant, syrup plant, then you've got to go to the water plant because we're going to get a dilation on, on there we're going, so it's going to be pumped out. We usually do it every other year.
Okay. So, so I guess we need to deal with that new business promotion or is that something that, how do we need to handle talking about that?
For the reports to be in the packet?
Yes.
So noted. They'll be there as soon as we get them.
Thank you.
I'll be meeting with them tomorrow to find out. Any other questions of the utility manager? Okay. Street Department?
I don't have anything, let y'all do.
Any questions from the older men on the streets?
Have any problems with streets anywhere?
Yeah, we got problems everywhere.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. When we talked in the streets meeting, I think it was after you left, and we were looking at the budget, we asked the question, what our priorities were for paving, and it didn't sound like we had any priorities at the moment, and we'll talk about this in a little bit in the budget, but, so, we had a further follow-up conversation about setting aside some money, because when you do have a paving issue, it costs way more than we usually have on hand. At one point, I had sort of taken all the roads and divided them up into a per mile, and I think I got some pricing for you, and we came up with something like $60,000 per year, an average. Does that seem reasonable, or do you have a reasonable number for us?
No, that's just really patchwork. I mean, you know, that's no paving roads, and it's hard to get you a price on it, because, you know, it goes up, I mean, daily.
Yeah.
The way oil is, the way gravel is, I mean...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, in these years where we don't have big paving projects, we ought to be setting that money aside, so that we do have paving projects, we have the money set aside.
And we talked about, you know, a lot of this, what they're doing, the rehab on the sewer now, you know, wait till they get through to see what we do need to do.
And don't the counties help us for each of what they do?
They do, they, Marion County does asphalt, Grundy County don't. But they discharge us really material, and really no labor.
Okay.
They help us out that way.
Any other questions on the street department?
Can, does MTAAS have any information about street repair cost, or setting up a schedule for repairing? Do we have? I don't know that.
I don't know that either. I would submit that each municipality is different, and as Keith correctly stated, the prices change based on oil and plant operations and material costs, so I don't know if there's a hard and fast rule. There used to be, I don't think it's valid anymore. It used to be so much per foot, or depending on the surface that you were using, and if it was old or new.
But they used to have a number of miles, towns could take the number of miles from the city, and then show what communities do for a percentage of budget to maintain those cities, dirt streets.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's still a valid formula, but I'll look into that.
That's what I did to come up with that $60,000 number, was I went to MTAAS, and we used the numbers, Keith gave me the numbers for Grundy County and for Marion County, where our pavings were, and I think we did a, I think we started with a 20-year replacement on asphalt, and 15 on tar and chip, and just sort of backed out of the numbers that way, and that's where the 60 came from. My question, I don't know whether it's still valid, that was three years ago.
Probably not.
Yeah, probably not.
Probably, it's probably low.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt real quick. John, before you go, will you just ask them for their report next year, if they could just look at those maximum daily limit numbers that are down there, that are the 9999s for next one? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Not a problem. The Tree Advisory Council is sponsoring an educational event on Wednesday at 1:00. It's Roots to Shoots, it's the best practices for taking care, for planting trees. It's open to the public, there's no cost. It will be in the Pulliam Center at Montegoal Sunday School Assembly. So I'm putting notices out every day, encourage anyone who is interested to come. The Public Art Committee is planning an event in the fall where we will be painting trashcans. And we're trying to figure out trashcans, buying or whatever. We hope to hear from Lowe's around the end of June about the grant for lights on Main Street. And I hope you have noticed the activity in the triangle behind the post office. Dan, Danny Pate, and our town staff have been working on it, and there're gonna be plants, and we hope to get a sculpture in the middle of it.
Thank you. Any questions for Martha Ann?
We had picked out a couple of sample lights to try out before this Lowe's grant came in. Did those come in?
Yes, and they're scheduled to be put into this week.
Okay, so people could be watching out for those, because they're different from the lights we've had downtown. We couldn't get any more of those, the current style we have, so we changed styles.
Do we know where the new ones are gonna, where along the road they're gonna be put up?
No, we'll just pick spots probably on corners, or where they're burned out now. Keith and I will pick locations.
Where they're broken?
Yeah, that's what we said, where there were sun masons and tops masons, we'll put them there and see what they look like.
So it'll be obvious which ones are the new ones?
They look very different.
Okay, Nate, you wanna do Imagine Montegoal?
Sure, well, thank you, Martha Ann, and so the beautification is one of the committees that has been set up and sort of come out of Imagine Montegoal. The other committees are the Tourism Committee, which is chaired by Ivan Michelle, the Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by John Clark, and a fundraising committee that sort of has its leadership in flux right now. But we're sort of, they're working in lots of different realms, and our hope is that by the end of the year, we can come together with several concrete projects to take on, sorry, by the end of the summer, several concrete projects in addition to the ones we've already taken on. So that's really exciting. The two that the main steering committee has worked on, that hasn't, is working on, that haven't fallen to a subcommittee, are planning and zoning. So back to the earlier question about problems with our ordinance, we do need to go through our ordinances. We currently have a consultant who is helping us go through our planning and zoning document. And so, in the next three days, everybody on the Planning Commission and the City Council is gonna receive a marked-up copy of our entire planning and zoning ordinance, and we're gonna be asking for feedback on each of those comments. And the point of this is to go through the entire planning and zoning ordinance. There, the professionals are identifying locations where they either have questions, whether they think things are unclear or unnecessary. Some of y'all may have been at the presentation they made last month, where they showed out that there are, what did they say, 16 different areas where things that normally don't require Planning Commission review, need Planning Commission review, and there were something like 30-something things that were not defined. So they're going through the entire ordinance, and they're identifying those locations. And so we're gonna ask these groups, the Planning Commission and the council, to go through and comment on them. And from, based on those comments, we're gonna put all these changes, or proposed changes, in the zoning ordinance into three buckets. The first bucket being the no-brainers, the second bucket means are things that the council and the Planning Commission have concerns enough about that we need to talk about some more, and then the third bucket are the heavier lifts. And what we want to do is, knowing that this contract is fairly limited, if we can identify as many no-brainers, easy lifts as we can, try to get those packaged and put together for the Planning Commission to begin to act on them, and then hopefully the City Council to act on them. While that is happening, they're gonna shift their focus to downtown and the adjacent areas, and are gonna be working on how the specific changes that they think need to happen within the downtown area and the surrounding areas to get our downtown area moving forward in a positive manner. So if you, those of you who've been following this process, you know, they gave us a contract where they said, we're gonna go through the whole zoning ordinance, but we really want to zone in on downtown. So they're gonna zone in on downtown, so their next product, after they get this commented and marked-up version from us on planning and zoning, they'll focus on downtown. Then they're gonna come back and have a conversation within the council and the Planning Commission to say, okay, let's look at these Tier 2 items, these things that maybe need more information, or these things that are heavy lifts. And they want to have both an educational forum, and also a feedback forum, where we can identify which of these things we can take action on. And that's kind of how we hope to get through the whole zoning ordinance through the course of their contract. Their contract, I think, is up toward the end of the year. So really excited about how that's going. I know the kickoff meeting, there was a lot of energy there. The Planning Commission and council both had a lot of good questions, and I think was really interested in what they were doing. The other initiative that we're working on right now is water and sewer. I think I mentioned last month that I wrote a grant to an organization that's helping us think strategically about water and sewer in both the near and the long-term future. I put out a call for interested citizens, and I got a lot of feedback. So I think there are now 13 people as part of this committee. We're meeting right now twice a month for the next four months. This committee is made up of both citizens of Montegoal, Montegoal residents, but also folks from the surrounding area. So we're also working with Tracy City, Coalmont, or Big Creek has been in part of some of the conversations, as has Swanee. So we're really hoping that over the next year or so, we can come up with some concrete ideas to then test out and begin to look at the feasibility of. So the second phase of this grant I wrote is actually seed funding, to begin to think about implementation, some of these ideas. So I look forward to being able to present to y'all, within the next 10 months, some of these preliminary ideas, and talk about how we're moving forward with that. At the same time, again, thinking about water and sewer, this same group and more folks from the region, so more folks from Tracy, from Big Creek, and from Swanee, are gonna be meeting with the Comptroller's Office in a meeting that was set up by Senator Bowling, to again, begin to also talk about the logistics of how working together to solve some of these water and sewer issues would work. So I hope, hopefully, we can have a report, at least a preliminary report on that in June. We're gonna be meeting here in City Hall, I think it's next week. So I'm excited about both of those initiatives. Again, these are kind of long-term, and that's really what the Imagine Montegoal was about, was about thinking long-term, where do we want to go, and figuring out stepwise about how to get there. So I'm excited about how that's happening. I think that's all I got for Imagine.
Alderman, any questions on Imagine Montegoal?
I think when the consultants were here, it was my feel that they were talking about for this downtown project, that they were going, in all likelihood, recommend, or feel like we would have to reduce lot sizes on residential lots that they keyed in on that line. And I think it's probably similar to what Mr. Paul's site plan was showing on Parker Street, the denser, more density in the land area, and the houses, and kind of like it on Laurel Trails Road, that project. And I think it's gonna have to be a sale to the people in the neighborhood and stuff. I wonder out loud if some of the problem on Parker Street might be more opposition from the neighbors than it is some other reason.
I would hope it's just straightforward water issue, but yes, it's more about allowing more things to happen, rather than requiring more things to happen. So particularly in the downtown district, they would allow smaller setbacks and smaller lot sizes than are currently permitted, but you wouldn't require that you do that. I mean, it's kind of an interesting concept, but their basic premise is that they can give us a fancy plan on how to make a fancy downtown, but if the numbers don't pencil out, nobody's gonna do it. And so what they're trying to do is get the regulations to become less onerous, to encourage the development. So rather than requiring, you know, one of the things that's very popular is mixed use. So we'd love to have some mixed-use buildings downtown that had retail down below, and had residential apartments upstairs. You see that all over the place. But the reality of it is, to go from nothing to that, it's hard to get investors involved. And so they're really interested in incremental change. Eric showed me a couple of shots of a town that he didn't do, but another developer did, of small, single-story buildings in the downtown, that he said were, actually, one of them was getting ready to be demolished, and was gonna be replaced with one of these multi-family mixed-use buildings. And he said, well, the thing about these buildings that you're seeing a picture of is that they're trailers. And they were brought in because they were cheap, and they were brought in because they were cheap, and it started the development. And what they did was, rather than, again, rather than regulate to the point where nobody could do anything, they went in and did very light, what's called form-based code, where they work, they think much less about what the actual use is, and much more about what the shape and what the form looks like. So that there are more opportunities for people to come in and invest. And so when I say that these are trailers, and you laugh, they didn't look like trailers, you couldn't tell, because they had a form, and I think they'll probably end up, we'll probably end up seeing some recommendations like this, that says, you know, in the downtown development district, you want the buildings to front on the street, have parking in the rear. You want them to have front windows, and you want them to have an awning, or something simple like that. So none of this architectural complexity, they're gonna drive up the cost, but just simple things that make it look and feel like a downtown.
But all that, I think they first said, we have a severe shortage of housing.
Yes.
And in order to remedy that, you're gonna have to have higher-density housing from what we currently have.
Gonna have to have the opportunity to do that.
Yes, and so if it starts off bad on Parker Street, I don't see it getting any better when it gets to Common Street.
Well, one of the things that is informing them is they have access to all our water and sewer infrastructure, so they know where our lanes, and where our lines, and where our capacity are. But again, and the idea on that is, if we reduce the setback requirements and allow greater density, then a developer could come in and make the same or greater dollar per square foot on a development that might serve more people. But it's still very early in the process, but that's kind of where they're leaning.
The other thing that comes up with regard to all of that, and I'm sure you're addressing it one day, is design standards, which would dovetail into the look.
Well, and that's where they want to be really light touch on that, because design standards can really quickly make developments unaffordable. And so they want to figure out how, and want to present to us, how to create the character without driving out the development.
Some guideline or something, okay. Any other questions for Imagine Montegoal?
Just kind of a note for, to call out Martha Ann and Ivan Michelle for the work that they've done in beautification and tourism respectively. Just the tourism part of it, where I was sent out a notice of any sketch artists in town to help with revising our logo for the city, that I think if we can land on the right one, would be used not only for tourism, but potentially for the city to use as a new logo entirely. To anybody that's listening, watching, or has friends, or anybody that's a doodler, we'd appreciate some ideas. I think they're due to you by May 10th, is that right? And then, and also, just so everybody knows, Nate talked a lot about some things that are kind of in the future, that what we're moving to, and things like that, but something that is very tangible, that is a Montegoal, Imagine Montegoal, kind of the first initiative is a school sign. So let's not miss the opportunity to recognize that Imagine Montegoal is not just five, 10 years down the road, there are things that are happening right now. And you'll notice the new foundation for the elementary school sign, it looks great. David did a great job with that, and I, if I remember correctly from the last meeting we had, that sign is due to the school, I think at the end of, middle of, end of May, right? So we're really close to seeing that go up, which is a very tangible and positive sign. That's the first step in this Imagine Montegoal process. So it's not just all fairy tales and unicorns down the line, we're actually doing some things right away. So just wanted to point that out.
Okay, any other comments, Alderman?
Well played.
Okay. Alderman, Dean, you have anything?
I'll go last.
Okay, Rand, you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of items, I'll try to make them quick. I would like, I don't know if a motion needs to be made, or if a note be taken about the beer permits that Dean had brought up earlier. I do believe that that needs to be looked at and add Travis's signature on it, or wherever the coach person is. Signature that they have re-verified distances, and all kinds of other things in terms of not just relying on, yep, they had an old permit, so the new one's good too. I also believe the permit needs to, when it talks about whether your license has been revoked in the state of Tennessee, for any kind of violations, I think that needs to be the state of Tennessee and other states. I don't think we need to limit it to that. We have a lot of influx of out-of-towners, out-of-staters, that I think we need to pay attention to. attention to. And I would also request, I don't think there's a legality issue to this, but I would also request that there be an item on there for the applicant to determine if they have any kind of convicted felonies.
Well, that's been noted and that will be added to a form that we'll create.
Okay. We had talked, and moving on to the sewage and water, we had talked about the need for metering, the, I think there were three different points. The sewage influent, yeah, influent coming into the plant at different points, one being Tracy City is the big one. And I think potentially we talked about maybe one, can't remember where the other one was, maybe the assembly, maybe somewhere else. But those, are we, I have forgotten, I apologize. Are we waiting for Travis to get back to us?
Yes, after he talks, after he talks to Tracy City, he plans on metering. He was waiting till the INI project is completely done and signed off, and then he'll pick those three sites that you mentioned and meter them and see how we're doing.
So I think we had talked about that. I understand that's for the temporary metering, but I thought we talked about permanent meters and those things. I know they're expensive, but it was something that we were going to be looking at in the budget. And I didn't know where we stood with that. I thought we were waiting on Travis to get back to us because it doesn't have anything to do with our Tracy City contract. And I didn't remember what was the, what we were waiting on to either look at a budget item before our budget gets passed in terms of maybe starting with one meter and working up over the next two years with another meter and another meter. But these were going to be permanent meters, the most important again, being the one that's over at the lift station coming from Tracy. So I didn't know if anybody had any other memory or input on that because I think it's something that may need to be talked about for this upcoming budget as we go through this over the next two months.
My recollection is Travis had said that might be something that we would want to insert into the contract with Tracy City, is that that be metered and the billing would be off a Grandmaster meter and that we would negotiate the cost of that between the two parties.
So you think it would be a split cost as part of the contract?
Whatever both parties would think would be mutually advantageous for both parties. And where are we on the Tracy City contract?
I was waiting to hear back on a date to meet again. We had an initial meeting, just trying to get coordinated that there'll be a formal meeting where we sit down and refine the contract. I've been pushing because as you know, there's a July due date and I'd like to resolve it sooner rather than later.
Did Travis have his informal meeting?
Yes.
And we don't, we don't know the results yet of that?
I'm sorry?
We don't know the results of that yet?
It was very informal. It was just, when are you going to get together? Here are some comments and points to think about. And they're supposed to get back to us and at that point, we have our formal meeting. As yet, we haven't heard from them.
They have a master meter at Inman. Could it be as simple as giving us access to that meter and calibration, capacity on that meter?
Where'd you say it is?
It's at Inman Road. So we're currently getting paid based on their master meter.
I thought the master meter that they were charging us was, was at their plant.
No, no, I think it's, it's right there at Inman Road, at that little facility, the little cage facility there.
They've been doing some construction there this past 10 days. I don't know what they're doing there, but they've had some equipment there removing stuff and putting stuff in.
They put in a new pump.
Yeah, they said it won't stink anymore.
They did.
That's what they told me because I asked them what they were doing.
Well, you and I are going to monitor that.
Yes, you are.
All right. When we follow up with him, if I recall, Travis said that they're, that we're relying on their, their meter that is closer to their plant, that they didn't have one at Inman Road. But that's something to look into.
They put in one at Inman Road.
Yes, that's what we're.
Twelve grand, they said.
Yeah. And those were, but those were a cheaper, somebody had said a cheaper version that was, was temporary.
Right. I think they're more portable than.
Well, the, the valid one would be $50,000 or $60,000 or something, which you would still probably pay for itself. I mean, you know, we spend, we spend $50,000 on some things and we think it's a bargain and we mentioned $50,000 for other things that we all.
Okay. So my, my point then is let's, for everybody, just let's make a note when we get to this point, we need to talk more specifically and find out exactly where we're getting metered by, by, we're relying on their meter. And we need to talk about these potential permanent meters and at least that spot, if not a couple more around the city, so we can get a better handle on, on not only INI, but everything else that should help us with our Phase Two and God forbid, Phase Three with INI project. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Dan, anything?
The INI situation that was talked about with our meeting with Travis, the other meter possibly getting numbers were the one across from the Bowes Center and some of the work that's going to be done, I think on First Street, is that what we talked about? Other things that I would like to mention in reference to ongoing progress, we've got a couple of additional restaurants that are going to be in place that are, one, changing hands, an old-name restaurant, Changing Hands, that has always been a mainstay in Mont Eagle since a long time ago when the Milners actually started it, I think. And I go back a long time because I've been here 60 years. So, but anyway, that's a good thing and we need to continue to stay abreast of the heartbeat of all of those things that are happening. We've also got some dirt work happening at the new convenience center and you're going to get questions on that. So I think it behooves us to, as supporters and legislators of the community, to be accurate with our, our comments about what's happening where and when and if we don't know, say we don't know, which is usually what I say because I don't know. But I drive by it like everybody else does and everybody gets the questions and then, you know, it comes down to that. So as we learn, we'll, we'll pass on the information that we know and you're just going to, I think we're seeing the state people involved in the Interstate Bridge and the continuing drilling they're doing there and doing their testing and their surveying and so forth is going to result in things that we're going to be asked a lot of questions about also. So I just, I just think we need to be informed and be able to give accurate answers when we're asked. I think that that's important for us as leaders in the community.
Thank you. Nate, you have anything else?
Okay. Mayor?
Dean?
Yes. Sorry. Last couple of months, I brought up about dealing with, with the safety issues at Pilot and it's getting worse as far as the numbers may not reflect it on accidents, but the big tractor-trailers are parking out on the shoulders of the main road. And yesterday, there was one that had to pull over so close to the no parking signs that if you were in the passenger side of his truck, you couldn't have opened the door to get out. There's like eight of those signs that says no parking and they park there daily. And then if you're coming out of Pilot and you look to your left, there's always at night, there's one or two will park in front of the Pilot, the chain link fence there and you have no clear view of oncoming traffic coming across the bridge, coming into town. And then the other issues are when trucks are coming off Interstate, usually in late afternoons, pulling into Pilot's Lot, they clog up the main road up there. If you come out of Pilot, you can't go anywhere. You can't turn right, you can't turn left, you just have to sit there until the parking lot, people, if they're going backing into a slot, it may take them 10 minutes to back in. And so traffic is at a standstill for that time. And I think, we've talked about it for two, three months, but I think it's time to do something about that.
Well, I have, I think your first request was a traffic study by T-DOT, which I have requested and I'm waiting to hear back from them. The other thing I've asked the police to ask them to move and if they don't move, ticket them. They park along there, they park along the ramps. The ramps are part of THP from what I was told.
Yes.
But they seem to be parking everywhere.
Well, they do.
I can see them parking at the site that Dan just mentioned next to the Shell Station in front of Piggly Wiggly.
Yeah. But I think we need to also notify THP and ask for their assistance on the ramps.
That I think has been done by our police, but I'll double check.
Yeah, we need, we need to ask for their assistance in that and then if we need to go further up the chain, but obviously what we've been doing is not getting results. And then the thing down on Ren's Nest Road, again, I think if we had the markings defined, it would be a much safer environment there for everyone traveling the main road and the people going in on Ren's Nest where they're going to McDonald's or they're going to Sonic or they're going home. And the same thing when they come back out.
And I've addressed that. All that will be changed with what I'm calling the peanut. At Ren's Nest, there'll be directional, T-DOT will put up and lines painted to them.
Yeah, that's probably going to be a couple of years, three years. I think that the striping and stuff is a city street thing and should be done immediately in this year's budget numbers. I think ultimately the peanut and stuff hopefully works and all that, but when that was first done down there, there was the center turn lane, there was three lanes and they were well-defined. And now there's no defining of a turn lane or which way people, when they come out of McDonald's, whether they go in the middle, left, right, same way with Sonic. And I guess the people that live out there know, Nate knows which side of the road to get on, Grant, I mean. And, but I think that's, it's very important. It's a, it's not that much money to strap that road.
It's going to be a city issue. I think you're right.
And it's not, it's not the whole road. There's literally just that, that section.
The turning area.
Coming out of Mapco and Sonic.
Yeah, probably less than 200 feet, I think.
Yeah.
And anyway, I think we need to take action on that. And then something new, we talked about Tracy Contract on utility thing, so that's going to be done by July. The tornado siren, are we going to take that down or?
Yes, when our bucket truck gets back, we'll be taking that down. It's been disconnected, so it does not affect the 911 building operation in your.
Okay. And that'll be declared surplus and?
Yes, it will try to solid.
Okay. And on the employees, when we hire employees and stuff, regardless of what department, if it's utility department, we have, we have job descriptions for employees for, I would say for a particular slot, if it's a water treatment plant operator. We have that slot and we have minimum requirements to maintain, to town that job and then the pay scale.
Well, following the licensing procedure and the T-DEC guidelines.
Yeah.
Yes, because they supervise in essence the operators.
Okay. And then if you take other departments and we hire people in and they're competing with another employee in another classification and their, their pay differential. We got into it one time several years ago that we were not competitive with certain employee slots, what I call, whether it be a water plant operator. We lost a water plant operator one time over a 25 cent an hour rate. We've lost such operators because of the, of the pay scale. I've been told recently that we have hired and there's no big pay differential between our operators, equipment operators, and what I'd call the people, the guys that mow and weed eat and do all that. How do we, what do we have that we can, that the council can have to review all of that and see what we think about is the fairness and the cost and even overtime? Do we have a lot of overtime?
It depends on the routine of weed eating and mowing, but water main breaks or things like that, yes. We don't have a lot, but when it happens, we have probably four to five individuals involved.
Okay. So we keep a record of like laying out of overtime for a water plant or a water break or?
That's in the paperwork information, yes.
Okay. So we can, we can come by and get with Evy and look at all that?
I would think, yes.
Okay. And the armory, you've been corresponding with the, with the state down on the armory?
I have and I went to a meeting with Southeast Tennessee Development and Michael Brady. They're trying to get funding through the three-store program and I'm working on other avenues for funding as well.
Okay. And the last thing I have, I think, is the Sparkle Day thing, I just want to comment. I think the people in last there who have been very receptive of the fact that the city is going to continue to do the Sparkle Week thing and we're here, I feel like we're here to serve the needs of the citizens and there's a lot of them that depend on that to get rid of their junk and they plan for that.
As long as there's full cooperation.
Well, hopefully there will be. Yeah. And if it's some little old lady that can't drag out her washing machine.
That's completely different.
Hopefully, we won't saw her in the court.
Well, I don't think so. I think she probably has a relative that can help her. I think she's done it before. I'm more concerned about people that think that they're entitled to six pickups in two days. So we'll address that and we'll see what happens this year.
Okay.
But that's fine that we're doing it.
Just from a clarification sake, you said that Sparkle Week was May 12th through May 16th?
Yes.
We need, everything needed to be out by Sunday. So not having a calendar in front of me, is that everything needs to be out by the 12th and it'll be picked up?
No, May 11th.
Okay. So really, Sparkle Week.
You put it out Sunday night, we start picking up Monday.
So Sparkle Week ends the 12th for this community residence. So the 13th, 14th, 15th and 16th aren't relevant for anybody living in the city. The people living in the city need to know everything needs to be out by the 12th.
Which is communicated.
Is that right?
Yeah. No, by the 11th, Sunday night, because we start Monday morning.
But you're not going to be in all of them that are.
No, but we go as we go. If there's two items on one block and six items on another block, we just keep moving through it.
Right.
And we've defined the boundaries and we start at a point and move forward and start at a point, move forward county by county. And all that information will be put out.
But if I'm going home, if I'm going home and I see my neighbor has put their stuff out.
Yeah.
And it's obvious the city hasn't been, been down through there and it's Tuesday morning. If I go home and drag my washing machine out to the driveway.
If it's obvious.
Yeah.
Make sure your washing machine isn't the only thing on the street.
But I'm going to leave my refrigerator on the front porch.
If, Mayor, if I could have one go back to, to what Dean had said about the overtime. I mean, you know, payroll is a huge, huge part of our overall budget and I think we ought to, I agree with Dean that we need to be looking at that. Is it possible to get a, like an overtime report, maybe every month, so we can see which departments are kind of pushing that overtime and that helps us understand whether we need more or less personnel and things like that? Is it possible to get an overtime report for each month?
Is it possible? I don't know each month, but the only time you really get into overtime is if there's major police activity or court appearances or things like that, or water main breaks where it happens at night or on a weekend.
Right. And unfortunately, we don't, we don't know when those happen, so.
Well, there's no forecast of when that happens. Whenever it happens, obviously, we just.
But it's still our responsibility as council people to monitor this.
Exactly. So, so, yeah.
As long as we fix the water line.
Yeah. So if we could get a report on overtime, that helps us limit it down to departments and figure out where, where we might need additional help or other things.
You can do that?
It's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move down. Old Business, second reading of Ordinance 03-25, which we had the public hearing on. It's a special exceptions ordinance. Is there a motion to accept that ordinance on the second reading?
I make a motion to accept the motion, the second reading of 0325.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Who's that? Grant?
Grant.
Grant, second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Adopted. Under New Business, first reading of Ordinance 04-25, the small box discount stores. You have that in your packet? Is there any, well, let's do a motion first to accept on the first reading, Ordinance Is there a motion to accept the first, or to have the first reading?
I'll make a motion to have first reading.
Thank you. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the first reading?
Can we get a reading for the Old Business, the special exceptions, please?
Excuse me, we've, A, we've had citizen comments, B, that's the only thing on our agenda for Old Business. We're now on. agenda for Old Business, we're now on New Business.
No, yes, I had a question when you were, before you voted on that, I was just saying, can we, uh, get a reading on it, on that part?
I would refer you to the ordinance folks and ask for their interpretation. First reading of Ordinance 04-25, do you have any questions on that? Or discussion on that, Alderman? Okay, all those in favor of adapting on the first reading, Ordinance 04-25, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is approved. First reading of Ordinance 05-25, changing the zoning from R3 to C2, I believe that was the church matter, uh, it's a planning commission meeting.
Yeah, can you, I'm sorry, can you remind me of this?
At the planning commission, there was a, um, church on, what? The first street and the highway, there's a church that the, church had asked that it be rezoned.
Used to be the Episcopal Church.
Holy, Church of the Holy Comfort.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason it doesn't have a, uh, a 41 address is because it has no parking places and no access from 41, it's access from Church Street, so that's kinda what throws everyone off.
And why do they wanna change from R3 to, to C2?
Because it's gonna take us into a doctor's office.
And their neighbors, some of their neighbors are already commercial entities.
Yeah, all the, you know, across the street, it is, is, uh, the Old O Center, which is not commercial, but, uh, adjacent to them is the mental health, uh, group home, nursing home, the doctor's office on the corner of College and 41, and, uh, but the, the platter said it did not create spot zone, and I think there are regulation laws that it be changed to accommodate the commercial use.
I make a motion to accept Ordinance 5-25 on the first reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have in your package the food truck ordinance for first reading of Ordinance 06-25, food trucks, is there a motion to accept on the first reading?
Can somebody give us a summary of this? I did not read it, and I know it, uh, came before the second reading.
So, the food trucks have to have certain, uh, water hookups, grease traps, be self-contained or not, be motorbo- self-motorized or not, uh, are they a restaurant or aren't they? All of this was addressed in that ordinance, and it replaces previous food truck ordinances. So it's comprehensive at, uh, Travis Law's request, his code enforcement, building inspector, that we refine the food truck ordinance, and this is the product that came out with his input, an attorney review.
How many, how many readings are we gonna be doing?
Two readings.
And this, this is the first?
Yes.
Um, 'cause I was hoping Travis was gonna be here, had a couple of questions, um...
We can add a conflict tonight, but, uh, he'll be here, we can do a workshop.
Is this retroactive after second passage? Every existing food vendor?
No.
Will be, have to apply?
It's not retroactive.
Okay.
But the two that we have, see, there's no problem with the fresh mess operation, or mall parks, or things like that, they come in, they sell, and they leave. We were more concerned about the permanent, permanence of food trucks. Are they self-propelled or aren't they? Are they a restaurant annex or aren't they? So all of that was addressed in this new ordinance.
Well, I, I'm not 100% sure it was addressed properly, nothing against Travis, that's why I was hoping to ask him, but as you guys looked through, if you read this a little more thoroughly before the next meet, before the next reading, I would, I would ask your opinions on whether this did cover the, the quote-unquote "permanent ones," um, 'cause I didn't see where it was completely addressed, and I had a couple other questions about the length of permits.
Do you want a workshop on it?
I mean, it's up to everybody else, we can either adjust it at the second, second reading, if, if everybody reads through it.
If we adjust it second reading, we'll have to still read through it twice, so...
It has to go back again.
Yeah, so, I, I have lots of questions about it, I'm, I'm happy to ask them now or ask them later.
Well, to do it all, let's do it with Travis here, and we'll schedule a little workshop.
Yeah, 'cause I, I've read the old one and the new one, and, and I, I, I heard, heard you, and I appreciate your, um, clarifying the intent. My, my main concern was how we collect sales tax, and I'm concerned that it, it just really sorta glosses over that, um, and, and adds, adds some things that are really sorta onerous, that I'm not sure are, are serving us, but, again, we can, we can go through this, I think there's just, there's some tweaking that needs to be done to it.
I'll schedule a workshop, I will address the sales tax portion, it's my understanding that wherever you are registered is your primary place of business, that's where your sales tax reports go to, and the money goes to. There's no way really for us or any municipality to track how much they sell to calculate the sales tax.
Well, there's a piece in this.
Ordinance, it says it does.
There's a piece in this ordinance that says they have to provide that to us, and that my question was...
Yes, going forward, I was talking about currently, that's why we put that in there, there was no way to find out.
Right, but it's just a single line, and I, I guess, that, that's important to me, and, and I would rather spend some time understanding.
We'll schedule a workshop for food trucks with Travis there.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance on the first reading for food trucks, 06-25.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Who did what? Okay, all those in favor who said aye, do a roll call, okay, for the roll calls request.
No.
Yes.
Grant?
No.
Dean?
Uh, yes. Yes.
So, this passed on first reading, but it can be amended.
Certainly.
That's what I understand, that's why I wanted a workshop. But it takes another month after that to get it put in place.
We'll just still have to pass it two, two more times, so, I, I thought we were gonna table it, but, does that matter, same difference?
Either way, a table would do the same thing if we make changes at the workshop.
Yep, sure.
Okay. Do what?
Nothing, that's not what I'm saying.
Oh. Okay. Ordinance, uh, first reading of Ordinance 07-25, a budget amendment, that the accountant has prepared, you have that in your pocket? Is there a motion to accept that budget amendment on the first reading?
I make a motion to, uh, to vote on this from the first reading, 07-25.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion on that?
Yes, tell me why we're doing this.
Because you missed the budget meeting? Why are we doing this?
Well, it's a compliance issue, isn't it?
The accountant does this in the course of business to correct anything that needs correcting in the budget.
But is this the only thing in, in the 24, 25 budget?
No, there'll be year-end closings as well.
Okay, are we gonna have any advance notice of that? I mean, I, my, my favorite one to talk about is legal fees.
I don't know, is the short answer. This is the budget amendment that's needed for now, I suspect it'll be continued review, but...
And, and I'm getting off key here, and I apologize for that, but, but for our May meeting of, of, uh, the 19th, I think you said.
Yes.
Uh, can, can we have a potential list of, of these other, uh, accounts that, that, uh, and of course, we can look at our printout and, and actually see, but I want this for the record, I mean, I can go through the financial report and...
She'll do another ordinance with everything in it.
Yeah, but, but the only problem with that is, is we get it, you know, say, a week before the meeting, and, and, and...
Soon as I get it, I'll get it too.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, you know, it's, uh, it's just cleaning up what we have to do for compliance, and I understand that, but, but we, we have some things, uh, and something that I just despise, is spending all this money on legal fees.
But that's a budget, huh?
Right? And, but, but the point is, when you go over the budget on legal fees, you can't stop getting, using the lawyer. Unless you have a vote to say, "We will do no more legal opinions from our attorney that's charging us $400 an hour."
Well, as you may recall, part of the legal fees are lawsuits that we've been, been involved with, that the insurance company handles, that we pay the deductible, so the legal fees and the financial statements are not all attorney fees.
No, I understand, I've gotten copies of Sam Elliott's bill, and, and where he's charged $1,700 to the Town of Mont Eagle for driving up here, meeting with, with the council, uh, and, and just numerous things like that, uh, answering emails and, and, uh, you know, billable hours, and, and, uh, you know, they've got a little program that does that, so, uh, then I saw where, uh, uh, the Southeast Tennessee Development guy had called our city attorney, uh, and talked with our city attorney, uh, and, and, you know...
We paid for it.
Yeah, and, uh, consulted with that, I, I think, uh, one time, uh, Nate, I think you had a, after we were on the building, uh, for the, uh, on, on one of the buildings...
I got permission from the mayor.
Okay, and, 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 uh, but, but I, I, I think when we're spending that kind of money, uh, it, it, it could be better spent, uh, to the senior citizens whom we're giving $1,000 to.
I agree.
Uh, but anyway, look, I'm back on this, I'm sorry.
Just so everybody knows, none of, none of these changes in this 07-25 are, have anything to do with legal fees.
I, I don't, I don't actually think it's correct, though, because they, so, the highway streets repairs and maintenance, that, that was put in for...
It's put in in the street area. That's moving it on to the street area.
But it, it says it's highway, so, so, so that one I get, but the, the $65,000 is not a state or federal grant, it's a private foundation grant. But shouldn't it be an increase, because it's an income rather than a decrease?
Well, hang on, didn't it get moved over to planning and zoning?
Well, it's an increase in the budget for planning and zoning, 'cause we're payout of planning and zoning, but on the revenue line, it needs to show an increase in revenues of $65,000, not a decrease in revenues of $65,000. Right, but it's a revenue line, so...
You can have the increase before you can decrease it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't... I guess it doesn't hurt us to pass it, and then if, if it's wrong...
We can get clarification.
We can get clarification, but it, it doesn't seem right.
It's increased, too.
Back on the second page, she's increased it on the planning and zoning.
'Cause that's where it comes out, so we have budgeted to spend that money, uh...
Do you have two pages? They're pointing to another page that shows revenue, but so what's the next page?
That's, that's the, that's the expense account, so it should come, it should be an increase in expense, but it's also an increase in revenue.
Okay, well, that's...
But I, I guess it doesn't hurt anything to, to pass it, and if it's incorrect, we can, we'll have to pass it again.
All right. We'll amend the amendment. Okay, do we have a motion on it?
And a second.
And a second. Or, any further discussion on the budget amendment, 07-25? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading of Ordinance 08-25, development review fees, that's something where I had personally been working on, Travis Wilson gets a lot of calls from a lot of developers seeking information on water and sewer, uh, facilities that we have, where I have found that almost every other municipality charges for that service, this ordinance incorporates those charges. So I will accept a motion for a first reading of Ordinance 08-25, development review fees. It may not pay dollar for dollar, but it'll come very close.
May I ask you to accept Ordinance 08-25 on the first reading?
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I think, uh, I've got a couple of questions up on them. We're saying, we're doing this because of fees, or the, the expense that the engineer is charging us, is to look at these projects, for instance, on site plan review fees. Fees will be assessed and calculated for the review and submission of site plans, preliminary plots, and final plots, cover the town's costs for the same. For pre-submental review, an initial deposit with the town clerk will be required as follows: For tracks of one acre or less, $150. Tracks one to five acres, $250, uh, five acres to 20 acres, $400, tracks over 20 acres, $650. In, in looking at that, are we comfortable knowing that, that if, if somebody comes in with 50 acres project, they're only gonna pay $650?
Those are initial deposits, I believe.
Yeah, then it goes on to say, "After this deposit is made, the pre-submental review may proceed. If the town engineer is an outside contractor, he or she will inform the town clerk of the total actual cost of the pre-submental review, and before the review is provided to the applicant, the town clerk will collect the same, less the deposit. If necessary, a further deposit to assure recovery of the town's costs may be requested."
Right.
And, and so, we talked about this a little bit, uh, previously, if, if we wanted to go to somebody and get a second opinion on, on Travis's work, that, that, would we accept it if they wanted to use, uh, uh, what's the group of Manchester?
Well, they'd, they'd come to us with their engineer, Travis is re, is representing the city, so a developer can choose whoever they want, but sooner or later they have to submit, and quite frankly, this was brought about, or pushed, or enforced, or made more urgent, uh, with Paul Fantuzzi's, uh, issue with Parker Street, and...
Yeah.
So I called Jonathan Rush and said, "Nothing gets approved till the town engineer looks at water and sewer," to avoid the very dilemma we're in.
Yeah, but, but this site plan review, uh, currently doesn't talk about water usage on, on applications and stuff, and I think that's...
Well, it'll, it'll determine the number of lines, there are formulas and filings that the engineer would have to do with T-Deck, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, if there was no guideline or T-Deck, everybody could put in whatever they wanted, well, he runs models based on so many square feet, so many fixtures, et cetera.
But I think, right, the deal that Mr. Paul had there, if, if on his site plan, he had to have approval for the city that we could provide water and sewer service, or whatever service we were providing, then in that case, it would not be sewer, it'd be T-Deck, uh, we, we would have, we, we could have saved a whole lot of embarrassment on this project, but by lapping it out on the front end.
That's why it's the pre and post submittals. There's another section for final review, and there's a section for pre-submental. And that's because in the pre-submental, they call with a lot of questions, and what if this, and what if that, that's why we're trying to refine it. This is based on MTAS, the attorney review, and, um, other accounts of similar size.
Yeah, I, I just think we need to know that their, the developer needs to know that, that their water is gonna be available really prior to them submitting a, and getting approval of, of a...
But it's not only water available, it's water available in the proper-sized pipe and length and pitch and all that other stuff, that they get volume and flow, et cetera, et cetera, and those, those, those were the issues that we were getting hung up on.
I'd like to have the citizens comment on, on that matter.
Well, it, at this time, it's one question, if you have, concerning this issue.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll be direct. I would request that there would be a formal process for the city to be held accountable to their zoning ordinance in regard to establishing, um, density, in particular regarding utilities, because that seems to be the primary issue with all developments in Mont Eagle.
Well, that's what he looks at, if that pipe is supplying existing, and then you add on to it, can you tap on to that being more or less...
So what I would say is, you can know that prior to any site plan, based on the size of the pipe... size of the pipe, so and all that stuff, he has that upfront. So what I'm saying, I have no issue whatsoever paying. But the issue we have is, I come to you, and we get three verbals from different people saying, "Yes, this is perfect, it'll work out," and then we sit down with John Condra, and that's not the case.
No, this will eliminate that because you don't sit down with anyone other than the engineer, and your engineer submits to our engineer. Well, I wanted to eliminate the three stops and the confusion that we have now.
Okay. So I guess, so the issue is, when you hire an outside engineer, you're sinking significant cost into hiring an outside engineer on a consulting basis. So no one is going to invest any money in a site plan or any kind of development. I mean, we're talking, depending on the size and scope of what you're wanting to do, north of $10,000. So no one is going to do that. What I'm asking is, formalize the process, say, "If this is R3, which is density, how many units?" It's a standard procedure in other municipalities to issue, "Here is the number of units you're allowed to build based on the existing infrastructure."
Oh, that...
That needs to be done upfront, and all I'm asking is to request there be like some sort of checklist of signatures that are signed off for the city to be held accountable to that.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
So when we had talked about this before, we had talked about allowing a developer to come forward and have a preliminary conversation without a fee. And I'm a little uncomfortable that every site plan is subject to these fees at the pre-submittal review. I agree that a lot of this should be known, and a lot of it is a zoning issue. So you bought a parcel that was R3, that we had zoned R3 and didn't have sewers, so we couldn't accept an R3 density. And we talked about this when we were looking at planning and zoning the other day. We've got a lot of districts that are like that. We've got R1 where we have density for R3, and we've got R3 where we only have density for R1. So that's something we're going to have to deal with. But a lot of this stuff is not, to quote you, "Five beta cap of work." You know, we know the line size. I wonder, so this talks about all site plans...
Which means new work.
Yes, but if we put a, there are going to be a lot of site plans where this is not going to be necessary. So if we have a site plan on a redevelopment of an existing commercial parcel where, unless there's, you know, some sort of high-rise development going in, it's not going to be an issue. And I'm just afraid it's going to be, it's more onerous than it needs to be. And again, we hadn't seen this, so we didn't have a chance to review it. It's kind of like the food truck ordinance.
Was it under the packet?
Yeah, but we got the packet on Friday. So, I mean, we didn't get a chance to ask questions about where this information came from. My gut would be to say, if we could limit this to subdivisions and commercial developments, then there would be a clear change in demand that would warrant this upfront. I just need to know more about it. I agree we need to recoup these fees. I agree we need to, in a timely manner, get developers the information they need. This just seems, it seems a little onerous on first read, and without understanding more about how this came about, it's hard for me to know.
Well, it came about because we thought the fees should be reimbursed by developers that are doing work. I'm not sure it applies to single-family residences. This is commercial new development.
The way it's written, it does not differentiate between commercial or residential. It says all site plans.
Well, okay, it depends. Are you getting it today?
I just think there needs to be a process.
Excuse me, I understand. Thank you, we'll work on the process. I don't know why this is, quite frankly, a mystery, but...
Well, we have all the information, so we paid to have a GIS system of all our water and sewer infrastructure.
Yes, but the developer that's developing needs that information.
But all we need to do...
And he may need a six-inch line instead of the existing two-inch line.
But all we should need to do is, with a couple of clicks, know the answer to that question.
I don't think things are that easy with your couple of clicks.
Respond in writing.
You do the couple of clicks.
Verbal has no way. When I submit something to you, it takes months to get something in writing. So if I submit a request, like, "Your ordinance says to consult with the town of Montego." I consult with the town of Montego, and I get nothing in writing back. That's an issue. There's no formal process. I have no issue whatsoever paying.
I understand.
But I'm saying, if you're going to hold me accountable, let's have some accountability on your side.
Sir, I understand. And that'll be addressed. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to accept on the first reading?
I'm asking for the rule.
Do what?
Rule. I didn't hear you. Roll call.
Oh, roll call, vote.
Danny?
No.
Correct.
I'm voting no because I think it needs to be adjusted.
It's the first reading, I'm voting yes.
Nate?
No.
Yes.
So can we work on this in that workshop with mobile food units?
Yep. Yeah. Just voted it down. Danny?
You feeling lonely there?
Not at all.
Love you like a brother.
Well, I do think it's an important issue, so I think we need to ask for a workshop. What's coming to my mind is, we voted down a $65,000 parking lot renovation when we knew we needed some parking lot work. We just didn't like the $65,000 one, and then we've not talked about it since.
That's right.
And so, this is important enough, we need to keep talking about it.
Okay, there's a first reading of the 2025-2026 budget. What does that mean? Motion? Motion to approve the budget on the first reading as submitted? Is there a motion, please? Is there a motion for the first reading, 2025-2026 budget?
I would make a motion that we approve on first reading this 2025-26 budget, and that it be published on our website in its entirety immediately before the second reading.
Usually, it's posted after it's approved as a second reading. If we put it on the website, which is a part of your motion, it would have to say draft or pending second reading.
I don't have a problem with that. I think it's useless to put it on the website after we pass it, and the citizens have no idea of what we're spending, what, $2 or $3 million on in the general fund, and what's the total? $5 or $6 million now?
Turning enterprise?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think if we pass it on first reading, it can be amended at the next meeting, and if people, for instance, think it's ludicrous that we're spending $1,000 on the senior citizens, and we're spending $700,000 somewhere else in a department, that we can make those adjustments at the second reading.
We can't. We'll then have to pass it two more times.
Well, that's all right.
It has to be passed by June 30th.
With a special meeting. I mean, you know, if the people, you know, I go back, it's what the citizens want in this community. If they're all fine with this, then I have no problem with it, but I think...
I've heard more than once that citizens have contacted their respective aldermen that they want to talk about. We had workshops, the accountant prepared it. You know better than anyone that it has to be approved by the comptroller by June 30th, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You're well aware of the process. I think that the citizens have to trust us to an extent that we're not having conventions in Las Vegas or Miami. This budget meets what we did when we met with the department heads and the accountant and reduced it to this document. But I understand what you're saying. I have no objection to any resident asking any question. I've answered some of those questions.
Well, I think it's a vision, you know, this is one vision of how this money should be spent. And when you meet with department heads and go over their budget, there was never a workshop to ask for any new ideas if we wanted to spend more money in recreation and do something besides the ballpark. If we wanted long-term, that we're just funding everything that we've been funding with an increase of cost of operation.
Because what we've been funding, quite frankly, in my opinion, bear bold necessity. We didn't have...
But again, it's the priority.
Well, I beg to differ with your comment about the process, but I think that is a May motion. Discuss it on the workshop, which quite frankly, I'm glad we're doing it April, that gives us May and June to pass the budget. After that, you can talk to the comptroller.
So one quick comment on that. As a citizen, I remember last year, it was probably this time last year, I had made the recommendation or asked the mayor and alderman if we could, if the citizens could get some sort of monthly screenshot of something, some kind of summary of the budget and where it stands, so that we can start getting, so the citizens could start getting a little bit more involved in the budget, because it was a complete black hole.
Get a financial, I agree with that.
I know, but I'm talking about the citizens. Yeah.
Well, that was one of the reasons...
I don't know if there's a, you know, one thing that can be...
About ten, fifteen pages.
No, 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 not the whole thing. I definitely don't mean that.
Bullet points.
I was talking about at least...
That's one of the reasons for drafting and coming up with a new website, which I have no objection to putting in main items.
Okay, what I'm pleased at, what I'm asking about, and I asked about before, is, at this meeting, for the citizens who come in here and sit down, can we have a dedicated spot on the agenda that gives everybody five minutes or whatever to show some sort of screenshot of our, of our, the standing of the different budget, the different fundings? And it can probably pull directly from these monthly reports that we get from Stephanie.
We can do that in citizens' comments, if anyone has any comments.
Why can't we make that an agenda item and just show everybody?
We can.
Okay.
Well, I apologize, because I put those spreadsheets together, that I showed, I think, last year, the five-year budget trends and where this budget sends us. I put all that together, but in updating this computer, it no longer talks to the screen. So otherwise, we would, we could see some of that at a very coarse level up there, but I apologize, technology got me, beat me.
Yeah, I mean, until, and I'd asked about it, but until I became an alderman and got these monthly reports and got confused about everything, as a citizen, you just don't have a lot of insight into how much money we have in terms of revenues, how much we spend, where it gets spent and all. And to Dean's point, I think they, the citizens deserve a little bit of, at least knowledge of it, if not feedback.
We can certainly do that. Okay, so is there...
Say what?
Is there a second to Dean's motion?
I made the second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Would you read the motion back, please?
We're going to pass the budget on first reading and put the whole budget on the website before the second reading.
Which technically will be scheduled for May?
Yeah. May not.
Yeah. Okay.
Nate?
Do we have further discussion? Can we have some further...
Well, you asked for, is there further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, my main issue with this, and I know it's like me barking up a, barking up the same tree over and over again, is we have, over and over, failed to prioritize capital reserves. And in the last several years, as I've harked on it, we've been able to make incremental change, and we've grown our capital reserves by a little bit every year. But this budget actually shows a decrease in capital reserves. And it does it for no reason other than we haven't made it a budget priority. The money is there, it's accumulated in our, in our general fund. We were told at the budget meetings that we were going to take the surplus of general fund from last year and move it into capital reserves, but that's not reflected in this budget. So this budget actually shows that we're going to draw more out of capital reserves than we're going to put in it. And I can't support a budget that does that.
Proposing entries as of June 30th shows what monies can be transferred to the capital account.
We haven't done it from the 2024 audit yet. It has not gone in there.
I think it has.
It did not, I didn't see it on the ledger.
I bet it's true.
It shows a net decrease in '25 and shows a balance. The other thing that we talked about was, we talked about new police cars and the CDGB grants all going into capital reserves, and we said at the time that we were going to surplus equipment, and that equipment was going to go, the proceeds from that equipment was going to go into capital reserves. That's also not reflected in this budget.
Because we haven't had that yet.
But you need to budget for it.
Well, we don't know the amounts that government deals will bring us.
No, but you...
On the surplus.
But you still have to budget for it. If it's not on paper on purpose, I'm quoting Dave Ramsey here, it's not happening, and I would like it to be in the budget.
What number would you like to put in there?
Well, we simply look at the equipment, give an estimated value, and put it in there, knowing that you're going to have to do a budget adjustment anyway, but by putting it on paper, you have shown intentionality to grow our capital reserves, and that's important.
I didn't tell Stephanie that.
I did, I did. And I also, to the final point, when we talked about streets, and I talked to Keith about this today, if we don't have immediate street needs, we need to be putting money away so that when we do have street needs, we can be, we can have reserves.
That's the money that she's putting into street aid.
The money that she's putting into street aid, the best way I read it is just to repair the T-dot lights.
Yeah. She's putting some on for streets, too.
Okay, because there was, there was $40,000, there's a $20,000 change in this, and there's $60,000 expenditures budgeted out of street aid. I didn't see revenues.
$60,000 expenditures for the streets.
If I misread that, then bless her heart, but I didn't see.
Okay, any other discussion on the first reading of the budget?
Nope. Roll call, please.
Nate?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Okay, final...
I would like to, there are some concerns, I don't know, but I agree with us funding that, and I think, I see this changing before the second reading.
I hope so.
And then, we need to be aware, in order for that to happen, that we would probably have to have a special called meeting, and if we need to go ahead and talk about that and schedule that for June 30th to cover ourselves, then...
Do we need to talk to Stephanie again?
I don't think we need to talk to Stephanie. I think we just need to, we've never had the whole budget.
She has to prepare the budget. What she prepares and reapproves goes to the comptroller.
But we, we had all the individual meetings.
Right.
And you had one with her.
Yes, but we haven't had a meeting where we had this final number put together, and I think, I think that would be...
So we need Stephanie again.
I don't think, I don't know that we need Stephanie.
I do, because...
Because she has to change that.
But we can send her notes and ask her what to change.
That's an ineffective means of communication. I'm not going to do notes and emails back and forth for a budget.
Well, it's a lot less expensive to do it as a council and not bring in the accountant.
I know.
I'm happy, do I need to be, if I need to be the note taker, I can do that.
No, why don't you be the note author? And write out what your deep concerns are that we've addressed.
I think we'll all have a conversation, but I'll be the note taker, and I will, I will pass it to you guys to communicate it with Stephanie and talk through.
And then we'll get it, then we tell him, and then we go back and forth.
Okay. Well, hopefully she'll charge less if she doesn't have to drive up here.
Yeah. Okay, the final thing, oh, so we have to, we voted, right? Wait, wait.
We voted, right?
Yes.
I have two questions. One, I don't remember hearing anything about a workshop on the budget for citizens. Was there?
No, there wasn't one. We will do that, we'll put it on the website, and if need be, I say, citizens that have questions can certainly address it under citizen comments when we're all here, and we can answer those questions.
Okay. Then my second question is, can the budget be put on the website like Wednesday to give us plenty of time to look at it?
Tomorrow.
Melissa, do you think?
And we would encourage feedback from the citizens. And don't wait until July the 3rd and say, you know, "Why did you do that?"
Final thing under new business is 02-25 resolution for T-dot. You have this in your packet, I know, and it talks about the right of way that they have to do to do the bridge work and the roundabout and all of that project. So, there is a form that has to be completed and filed and sent to them. You have that, too. It's a resolution form. It's authorization for the mayor of Montego to sign a proposal with Tennessee Department of Transportation and a put-in the project number. Be it resolved that the legislative body of Montego at a regular meeting, that the mayor be authorized to sign and...
body of Montego at a regular meeting, that the mayor be authorized to sign a proposal, which you have copies of, with T-Dot for the road improvement project. And then we have to say who moved, who seconded, and how many voted in favor and how many voted against. So is there a motion to adopt Resolution 02-25 for the right-of-way for the T-Dot project?
I will make that motion of 02-25 Resolution for T-Dot's requirements that they're requesting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Do we have any idea what the potential cost to the town of Montego will be, short-term or long-term, when we pass this proposal?
I ask that question. Their responsibility under TCA is curb-to-curb, so they will take care of all road surfaces. The town is responsible for lighting. Once they do the initial installation and wiring, all the wiring will be underground and encased. As it is now, we have to maintain the lighting that exists on the ramps at Exit 134 and 135. We'll have that same cost down the road as time goes on.
Can I start by thanking you for putting this out a month in advance? And we've already had a workshop on it, and that's great. And I think we all understand it more because we have sat down and had a workshop on it. Thank you.
No problem.
My only question is regarding the reimbursement for utility relocation. We, I share with you that note from T-Dot saying that they would, this was a covered expense. Is that application, what's the status of that?
That has to be filed by August. It's what they call Chapter 86. They will be borrowing under the interstate, relocating our water, and possibly, no, I don't think sewer line, but definitely the water line. But it's Chapter 86. I've included Travis Wilson in that loop, because he has to prepare the documents for what they call the A date and the B date. And we're working on that total process. If we don't do this, then the town is stuck with borrowing and relocating the water lines. So Chapter 86 deals with the utilities at T-Dot's expense. And we've been monitoring that almost daily.
Do you have a sense from your conversations with T-Dot whether we need to pass this resolution before we get that utility relocation reimbursement confirmation?
My conversation is, has been, this is for right-of-way, and they need that to proceed with their surveys, plans, et cetera. As somebody noted, I think, during or before the meeting, they talked about core drillings. They have a lot to do with core drillings to see if as and when they need a retaining wall. Obviously, this is right over the, near the interstate. So there's work to be done, and they need to establish the right-of-way, which, quite frankly, I believe they're working with Mountain Goat Trail and turning lanes and everything else, so they know what they're dealing with. That's why they need the right-of-way, which is separate from the utility thing. The utility issue is covered in the proposal under Chapter 86.
I read this to be quite urgent.
Yes, because it would hold up the project if we don't do it, including probably Chapter 86.
Quick question. We got, obviously, you sent this over to our attorney, Sam Elliott, and he made some comments. I, what I didn't see in his comments is any assessment of what kind of risk we've got in terms of monies or anything else. He just kinda listed through, just summarized everything that was in this, in the letter from the state. And so I didn't know if you had any other indication from Sam, whether this was, whether he had an opinion or that...
No, because, quite frankly, it's a T-Dot project, and they're following TCA and highway safety, because Interstate 24 is involved. That's one of the reasons the railway bridge is coming down, because of specs of interstate highways. So, no, and he, he's not in a position to offer. This is a T-Dot project. They're asking for right-of-way approval.
And, okay, then I guess why was he even involved in the correspondence then?
I'm sorry?
Why was he even involved in the correspondence then?
I asked him to review it in case there was something that we should not do or have done, or that he saw that should be at least questioned.
And he didn't give us an opinion back on that?
No. He made the comments on each item.
I think the way, the way that I think it's helpful to think about this is, we currently have responsibility for all the sidewalks, lighting, and infrastructure in that area, including the Rinznes paint that's all worn out. And they're saying, "We're gonna fix it and make it all new, and then you're still gonna be responsible for it." So, yes, there's long-term liability for maintenance. We've already got that. It's in pretty bad repairs. I think everybody will recognize, and this is better. In, the only question that I can think of that may predate Grant, you, and Dean, is that there was a question initially about whether to do traffic signals or peanut, or the traffic peanuts. And what T-Dot told us is that if we did signals, they would be our signals, and that the long-term operating and maintenance cost of the signals was greater than the long-term operating and maintenance cost of the peanut.
Yes, that's why we eliminated the traffic signals. That was an early-on conversation. You're right. And traffic signals would have been a challenge on a good day.
Also, they said that even in their 10-year forecast, we didn't have a traffic volume to justify the signals. So we were gonna create an expense for the town without any sort of justification.
How does the Mountain Goat Trail design, I haven't seen the proposal, that's incorporated into this?
Correct.
And the maintenance of that portion, whose liability is that?
That's the town. So it's in lieu of the sidewalks that are currently there and needing repair. So if you've gone through that area, a lot of the...
There was guard rail that was going westbound.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're assuming responsibility for maintenance of the Mountain Goat Trail there because of a previous contract that the town had to do with the Mountain Goat Trail?
It was with Mountain Goat Trail and the town, I believe, right?
No, this is just standard T-Dot project. So Stan...
So anything in that, whether it's Mountain Goat Trail or Bonanza?
If the Mountain Goat Trail were not there, it would still have sidewalk on it that we would still have to maintain. Because it's the Mountain Goat Trail, it's separated and wider.
Okay. The design is modified.
Yeah. And I don't, I haven't looked. Initially, they had sidewalks on the south side as well that were also gonna be ours, but I, they may have cut those down for budget, for budget of this area region.
As I've said to many people, the budget had to equal the contract, and it didn't. So they had to eliminate certain things. I think that was one of them. The express lane, for lack of a better phrase, to get to the rest area, that's been eliminated. So there are certain things that they've had to do. But the sweep of the ramps are still on, the Mountain Goat Trail, the removal of the railroad trestle, the single bridge, all of that. But there will be traffic interruption, because to take down a bridge over an interstate is a challenge.
And they're taking down three.
And they're taking down three. So, is there any further discussion on the, we have a first...
One thing, Mayor, I need to disclose. My good friend made mention one time that I might have a conflict of interest on something else. But on this particular issue, I need to declare that I may very well have a conflict of interest, because I've been notified by one of my partners in the property down there, that T-Dot has notified him that they are wanting to acquire property from the Montego Development Company, which I own part of. So if that happens, then I would stand to gain monetarily from this project.
Well, I appreciate that.
So I think the law says, if there is a potential conflict of interest, you must acknowledge that, and then you can still vote.
That's how I understand it.
They said in their, they said in their initial meeting here of the peanuts and all the reconstruction, that they would be investigating buying properties.
That's right.
And reconfiguring the exits and so forth. And that would take buying properties. So I'm sure that's some of the thoughts that what you're referring to.
Well, General Lester called and said they received notification, Montego Development Company received official notification from T-Dot about property acquisition that Montego Development Company owns.
T-Dot has done that with all the property owners that would be affected. I believe the depot received a letter, the other neighbors down the road, to their start and finish point, received notice.
All right. I just wanted to make sure everybody was, felt good about this thing.
Thank you. I appreciate that forthcomingness.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. If there's any, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Pass?
What?
Pass.
Oh, okay.
Means it comes back to you.
Okay, so wait a minute. To fill this out, who made the motion?
I did.
And Nate seconded. Okay. And it's four to one on the voting in favor and against?
One pass.
Well, you're supposed to ask me if I want to change, how I want to vote, how I want to change, and how I want to stay.
Against or for?
I'm not gonna do that. Because it's a potential conflict then.
Yep. So are you passing or are you abstaining?
Take the one.
Well, you have to abstain if you pass the first time.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You're gonna abstain for passing.
So tell her, tell her you're abstaining.
I'm abstaining, for the record.
I'll pass your extension down. He's abstaining.
Well, I'm the bottom.
I'll call and get a ruling, because this now goes to the courthouse to get certified copies, and two copies go to T-Dot. So this was step one of three or four steps. Okay, is that it? That's it for the agenda? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.